Ask for recording the members present in answer, please.
Barton.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Here.
Pinkleton.
Here.
Open meeting, flying stakes, Brad.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alva Independent School Districts, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma. Certified that prior to December fifteenth of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certified that at least twenty-four hours prior to this meeting, including Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view in the office of the superintendent.
Thank you. Item three is consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent items, agenda consists of discussion, consideration, and the approval of the following. Three point one is additional items to the agenda. Three point two is minutes. Three point three is finance report. Three point four is purchase order conferences. Three point five is extra duty schedule and assignments. Three point six, approval of activity fund report. Three point seven, approval of activity fundraisers. Three point eight, approval of activity fund inter-account transfers. Three point nine, child nutrition report. Three point ten, approval of board policy procedures. And three point eleven, declare the following items as surplus. So we'll go back to three point one. Are there any additional items of new business to the agenda?
I don't have any new business.
Three point two is minutes of our July twenty-eighth, twenty-five regular meeting. Any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, we'll move on to three point three, approval of the finance report. Mr. Rashers.
I'm gonna start with the general fund. With, right now we just have temporary appropriations put in. We temporarily appropriated fourteen million, eight hundred and six thousand dollars. We currently have six hundred forty-six thousand, four hundred eighty-six dollars less encumbered than we had this time last year. As you know, that ebbs and flows with when things come in, okay? Once kicks go off at where we're at. I expect appropriations to be in the neighborhood of seventeen and a half million once that's done. In August, we revenue five hundred forty-one thousand, two hundred and nine dollars. You remember that our largest revenue months come between January and April of tax collections. That's why our payrolls are so important. It's basically a savings counteract from July to December. So the general fund, we're looking pretty good right now. In the building fund, again, temporary appropriations, we had three million, eight hundred seventy-five thousand, seven forty-one appropriated. We currently have about six hundred fifty-five thousand dollars less encumbered this, now, than what we had this time last year. Because around this time last year, we made the best purchase that came mostly out of the building fund, that was a half million, so that probably accounts for a lot of that. I expect appropriations in the building fund to be around four point two million. In August, we revenue a hundred seventy-four thousand, one eighty-four. Thing I'd like to point out is we're planning for a bond issue to look at the new elementary school renovation to some of our other existing facilities. We need to remain conscious of where we spend a lot of these funds, carryover funds and all the things, so that we can help light and load them up on if we can. If we can buy the furniture, the smart boards and things like that, so take a big lift off of what we need to actually build a building. That's kind of the back of my mind as we're doing some of this financial planning. In our investment account, with our investments, we have five million, one hundred thousand invested in general fund. The building fund, there's three million, two hundred and three thousand dollars that's invested. And child nutrition fund, there's a hundred fifty-nine thousand invested. Those three are all making about four point three percent interest. Seeking funds still has eleven thousand in it, four point three five percent. And the gift fund, there's three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in there, four point one five percent. So total investments, eight million, seven hundred ninety-eight thousand, just earned right around four point three percent. Anyway, sort of our financial.
Okay. Questions? Okay, now we'll move over to three point four, approval of purchase order conferences for the following funds for fiscal year twenty-six.
It's part of the general fund. Just to point out a few, I did list them all separately, the POs. One seventy-two, one eighty-two, one eighty-seven, one ninety-three, two, one-two-four, two-two-fifteen, two-twenty-two, so eight of them. Those eight together, total thirty-four thousand, four hundred seventy-eight dollars. That was for curriculum, different vendors, the vast majority of that been online subscriptions, curriculum, things like Fall App for our library system, or Adobe that we use, middle school and high school, you know, that kind of stuff. So all of that, those eight in particular, I want to point out, it's curriculum directly tied to classrooms. PO number one eighty-eight is to miracle office supplies for ninety-three-hundred, ninety-three online. That was for upgrades to some of our office furniture. All our chairs were, fabric was peeling and things, so tried to upgrade some of that. And then a big lift on that was for office furniture desk and a filing cabinet, some of that for an office at the middle school that the Gold Bug Foundation is going to move into, get them a little better office and small conference room in the middle school to use for IDPs and things like that. POs one seventy-three, two thirty-one, and two thirty-two is all vehicle maintenance. They have those three total twelve thousand, six sixty-two. And then last one to point out is PO two forty-one, it's for the ACT for junior class fall benchmark test, was just right at three thousand, twenty-nine eighty-two. That all came out of the general fund. And we've got payroll, all the payroll stuff that all the teachers require at this point. And the building fund? PO thirty-seven is to actual arborist for tree trimming and removal, a lot of that was at the middle school. Had some diseased trees and things like that that we need to take out.
Where are they from?
It's, uh, Joe and Al.
Okay, I got you.
I was not pointing out. Yeah, cleared out. Cleaned that behind the middle school, that was where a lot of that was, and then the shrubs in the front, so it was a lot better.
Looks nice.
Yeah. PO thirty-nine is for Daddy Plumbing for a sewer lift station repair here at the high school for fifteen hundred dollars. There's a lift station in the basement, has to pop it up to get the main, get everything out of the building. And we've still got more repairs, probably in the fire bathroom, remodel this spring down there coming. PO number forty-two is to Index Oklahoma for exterior door lock repair. It's our access control system. We had two or three of the control panels that weren't working. And then had a power supply on another control panel that wasn't working, this and some doors. System just been around a minute, so anyway, that was for eleven thousand for Index to come out and get all of our key fob, just everything working again. PO sixty-one, Eclipse Industries, was for mold remediation, portable, so Washington, mainly the East portable, five thousand dollars. With all the rain that we've had, the water we're standing under there, it's dark, no wind, and it turned hot, so you imagine what happened. Started seeing signs of bulbs that called them, they come in, they've been cleaned and all that remediated before Brent first school started, so that's what that one is. PO sixty-four to Bushman, heat and air for air history repairs here at the high school. I think it was for a respite to go on one of the rooms on main hallway here, twenty-eight hundred. PO sixty-five is to grade on mechanical for replacement of an entire unit at the middle school for eight thousand. And then PO seventy-two is decline electrical, it's for some things that were found on the fire marshal's inspection. Mostly in auditorium, we had to put in four or five outlets, some of that comes down. It was on fire marshal's report, so that's three thousand. That's all, everything out, I draw attention to the building, and everything else is pretty standard.
I have a quick question.
On the, on the map testing software, how would it qualify out of the building?
Map testing software? Number fifty-one?
It's W E C C map testing software, ten thousand dollars.
We can still take it out of there, but it probably should be a general fund.
Yeah, maybe I just missed that one when you moved on.
Correction. Well, I thought there may be some reason they don't qualify.
I think you can get, I think you can take curriculum out.
You can't take it out of the building.
Would that be considered curriculum? Maybe you want to just slip through. I'll get that one.
I'm scared for trying to build that up.
That's wrong, aren't you? Child nutrition, we had, we had three come out of child nutrition. GMG Home Furnishings was for deep freeze at Lincoln Cafeteria. PO thirteen is to Hall Core, that's our maintenance agreement for our dishwashers. Remember last year, we replaced two, I think? Is that right? Placed two dishwashers and then repairs on almost all the rest of them, so we had maintenance agreement with them. Anyhow, it's gonna probably save us some money, so. PO fourteen is cafeteria, Keystone Cafeteria Management Assistant covering, four thousand dollars to cover that fees for the year. Child nutrition.
About a hundred and fifty thousand that's in child nutrition. Is that like carryover? We have about a hundred and fifty thousand carryover.
You'd say the investment fund?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I mean, that would be.
I think that would be.
That would be part of the carry.
We did a quick carryover last year out of the child nutrition fund, was two hundred and sixty-one thousand.
And then we did a bunch of stuff, didn't we?
Yes.
Yeah.
Again, that's, this is all of those, food chemicals. We actually had excess carryover in the child nutrition fund. Had to submit some paperwork to state on what we're gonna spend it on.
It's been nice to remodel it.
Yeah.
Get new equipment.
As we're planning this bond issue, we could take that carryover, the excess for sure. And if we can buy ovens and dishwashers and things to go in a new school, that's less we have to ask for.
That's what I wondered if that could be used for that.
That's, yeah, all that's in there.
That's good.
I think that's saving that process. Then the gift fund, there's eleven, ten or eleven, they're all scholarship payments for some of our kids, that scholarships last year.
Any questions on three point four? Thank you for those that were raised. Hearing none, we'll move over to three point five, approval of extra duty schedule and assignments, please.
I want to go over the changes from, from this last. Randy Burden is, he helped us last year with softball. Kind of the volunteer, maybe they had a spot for an additional assistant coach, so we offered that to him, so he'd get compensated first time this year. Anyway, Randy Burden for high school assistant softball. Danielle Christian Berry is going to, serves as mentor teacher for Mrs. Gilli. Mrs. Spine, here at the high school, the English says, has a second language for an hour, ESL for an hour here at the high school. I think that's five percent above the base of that. Baby Heda is a mentor teacher for Mr. Lowe and Mr. Blankenship in middle school. Margot Hamilton, middle school assistant softball, sixth and seventh grade girls head basketball, and eighth grade girls assistant basketball. Those are all current duties. Madison Hoffen, summer band camp. John Johnson, assistant seventh grade girls basketball and head eighth grade girls basketball. Tiffany Mata, mentor teacher for Mrs. Franz. Karen Lee, a mentor teacher for Mrs. Smith, and Tabitha Ward, mentor teacher for Mrs. Rankin. Tried to place a lot of our new, new teachers with a mentor. Think that's important, something we need to bring back, so.
Sure.
Anyway, that's all the changes on the extra duty.
I appreciate the persistence in that. Big watch sales, approval, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Derek Thomas is on there, high school baseball. We'd already hired him, so I wouldn't lose him in my list.
Any other questions?
We have two assistant softball positions and one baseball assistant.
We have another assistant baseball.
We have her.
We should have her now.
Hearing none, we'll move over to three point six, approval of the activity fund report.
Draw some, take some of our larger deposits or receipts, call them. Athletics, deposit fifty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars, a large piece of that, thirty-five or forty thousand, I have this in my plan. I know we tried something this year, instead of, instead of asking, if somebody buys a two thousand dollar plan, we pay a thousand this month and a thousand in October, right? So it's not one buy at one time. So we'll see where the market plan lands and all that's part of it. Lee, he's, he's probably expecting around forty thousand, forty to forty-five thousand on that deal, so. Softball, deposit ten thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars for some of their early fundraising this year. Cheerleaders, thirty-seven hundred dollars. And just draw attention to this, and the Gold Bug Education Coalition, they, there's seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars in deposits there. It's all donations for school supplies, so. Anyway, that's kind of the big things. Everything else in there is pretty normal to start the school year.
What did they spend on school supplies? What was the total ticket on that? I don't know.
So, they spent fifteen, they spent fifteen thousand. That's seventeen.
Is that about what normally it is? I have no idea what we're talking about.
No. They'll come back during the year and like have some elementary, the Kleenexes or whatever, they'll leave a little bit of a balance and go back and buy some more.
That's cool, that's a great program.
Anything else on activity fund? Hearing now, we'll move to three point seven, activity fund fundraisers.
Let me summarize these, and these are questions I'm sure the press can be able to answer. The first one is, middle school teachers selling ducks, duck races. And they also have, they have one for, they're requesting to sell Gold Bug apparel, t-shirts and that kind of thing. And then work concession stands and do a meal for all of them. All that's for, raising money for student centers. Pizza party for the class that does the most canned collections of Christmas, or you know, things like that, so. Those are three from middle school. TSA, middle school, wants to sell pickle pops at lunch on the playground or whatever, help raise money for registration, hotel rooms, sort of that type of thing. Boys' basketball had two. One is family and friend donations to raise money, again, for meal, travel gear, portion of a new shootaway. And then they also have one, free throw, shoot away, to do the same thing. And then banned, requesting a bake sale to raise money for band supplies. That's the kind of request.
Questions on activity fund fundraisers? Hearing now, we'll move to three point eight, approval of activity fund inter-account transfers?
Don't have any.
Don't have any? Okay, thank you. Three point nine, approval of the child nutrition report?
Yeah, we're just kind of getting the year started. The last two weeks of August, we served two thousand four hundred sixty-five breakfasts and five thousand five hundred twenty-three lunches. We revenue around sixteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars in August. We paid out seven thousand, three hundred and two, and this is not include our payment to Keystone via, so. It looks like our members won't appreciate it after serving.
Questions on child nutrition report?
No question on seconds. Kids allowed to be a second, or does it depend on age?
They can get seconds if there's anything left on the cafeteria.
I think that needs to be a priority. If that's part of what a contract is.
Two or three things I'm working on, put together, outside the cafeteria, that provide supplemental food, such as a sandwich bar or something like that. Still tricking through all the hoops of the child nutrition. And that is a priority, so.
Other questions on child nutrition? Hearing none, three point ten is approval of board policy and procedures.
Don't have any changes there.
Three point eleven, declare the following items as surplus.
Surplus.
I would entertain a motion. Three point one, three point eleven as presented.
I saw you.
I saw you.
Thank you.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Move on to four, administration report. Four point one is principals report.
Well, hi there. Wow, I got a whole bunch of people. I just have a little bit here, enrollment. We are at pre-k with sixty, kindergarten at seventy-four, and first grade at eighty-four. Had a great first couple of weeks. I want to give a shout out to my custodians, Ms. Sammy and Ms. Simona. We had one custodian for a month, and that set us behind a lot, so once August started and we had Ms. Sammy joining Ms. Simona, we got a lot done. I also want to just say that our transition from starting at eight-twenty, starting at eight-ten, and then dismissing later has gone very well, so thank you to parents and everyone who has paid attention to those changes and tried to get their students to school on time. On Friday, we celebrate Grandparents' Day. Longfellow is also doing that. We're celebrating at two fifteen on the playground with popsicles. Outdoor classroom, we have some posts put in for our shade structures, and we're waiting on the shade sales to come in to add to those, and some other playground equipment. Actually, I have a lot of money that I have to talk about, which is really cool. The Alva Friends of Play donated, Washington, Longfellow, Lincoln, and I think the middle school too, four thousand dollars each.
Wow.
To our playground to add something that is inclusive of all students. So students with disabilities that can also benefit from it, so we're talking about some different ideas. I think we might be able to get more than one thing. Right now, we're looking at, have you seen those swings that are like the parent swings and the child is like in front of them? It's like the parent's the one swinging, but the child is like sitting, you know what I'm talking about? Just for some of our early learners, they may not know how to swing yet and things like that. Also, Mrs. Murrow has received a TSET grant, and she's received something similar before, but I'm gonna read you from this so that I tell you exactly what she wanted me to say. We were awarded twenty thousand dollars from the Tobacco Settlement Endowment Trust, so TSET, which will be allocated over a two-year period to enhance our physical education program and promote a healthier school environment. To determine the most effective use of these funds, I use the CDC's School Health Index, modules focusing on physical education, nutrition, family engagement, and community involvement. This assessment helped identify specific areas of need within our school's health and physical activity practices. Based on the results from these modules, I will develop an action plan to use the TSET grant funding. So that was written by Ms. Murrow, so that's very exciting. We've already had one meeting about that, and we meet with Healthy Schools Oklahoma, with our Safe and Healthy Schools Committee that we have to have every year. So it's very exciting, so thank you to Ms. Murrow for that. We have some professional development coming up. Myself and three teachers are going to an autism training at the Oklahoma Autism Center on September eighteenth. I have a new teacher attending K-20 uplifting classrooms in September with some other teachers from, from some other sites. And then some title teachers are going to a training in September also. And we have some events coming up in October, but you can read those if you'd like to see them. Thank you.
Enrollment at Longfellow, it's a hundred and fifty-six, second grade at eighty, and third grade at seventy-six. As you can see, at first day of school, we had a couple of guest readers greet in Kansas as they came in and had a dynamite year, so we kind of started the year off with some fun, lightheartedness. Longfellow has started their, our benchmark testing. Students are completing their first benchmark test of the year, both in reading and math. I believe reading is completed. We're currently working on math, and this would be with the MWA map that you mentioned earlier, that would be both for Longfellow and Washington. This is an assessment we do three times a year. Grandparents' Day this Friday, as Mrs. Williams mentioned. At Longfellow, however, we're gonna have it in the morning. We, we work together, we want to be mindful. Grandparents travel from out of town, we could have it on the same day, and save them a trip. It would be beneficial to our kids and to our grandparents. So we will have ours in the morning. At seven fifty, they can bring their kids to school, and then they'll get to have a recess, a treat, go into the classrooms for morning announcements, and then tell them to have a great day. And then they'll get to take a break and go to Washington for the afternoon. Yeah, I didn't, my brain's not braining, but we, we received the grant as well, or not grant, the donation as well, the four thousand donation from Friends of Play, and we're very grateful for that. We've met several times, trying to figure out how we want to spend that to be inclusive, and we still are coming up with some ideas. We thought kind of a rope bridge is kind of one of the things that came up for like a sensory panel. We're still debating on what we want to use that money for, but we're super grateful for it, and we have some of our staff members going to the same training, so it's a great start to the, beginning of the year.
All right, we move on to Lincoln. We are at a lower number this year, a hundred and thirty-seven students, with fifty-eight fourth graders and seventy-nine in the fifth grade, so our fourth grade's much smaller this year. So far in August, we also, we have started the IXL benchmark, first time for us with IXL benchmarking. I really like it, so things are going smoothly there. We pretty much are finished with reading and math. We'll be collecting and reviewing that data in upcoming weeks in our PLC meetings. Our first few days have been very successful, everything's gone very smoothly. Parents have done a really great job, again, with the drop off and pickup, the time changes and everything, just remember those procedures of not turning around in the middle of the street, things like that. All of our drills have been completed at Lincoln for this fall semester. One of the things I would like to mention is the heavy rains that we have had this year have really taken a toll on. We have a big, south of our drive, there's a big gaping hole where water is now really washing over our drive, and it's also eroding the opposite side of our driveway, so we're looking at that, and in the sinking of our patios, you can just see the difference with the amount of rain that we've had this year, so that's a little concerning. And then as far as what we have upcoming, we have our Lincoln Math-a-Thons coming up soon, so we're excited to get that started, and packets will be going home on September tenth. We also will be having Lincoln Leaders campaigning, start September eighth. Permission slips are due back this Friday. Students will be hanging their posters between September eighth and seventeenth, and then they will give their speeches to the individual classroom teachers, or in their classrooms on the seventeenth, and the elections will take place following that. We will announce the new Lincoln Leaders on the nineteenth, and I'm very grateful to have Mrs. White taking that over, since Ms. Franz is now at Washington, so she's been our Lincoln Leader sponsor, but now we have Mrs. White, as I mentioned, she's made a good fabulous job, so we're looking forward to what she brings to our Lincoln Leaders this year. I won't repeat what they said, but we are very grateful to fund for the four thousand dollars we did receive from them.
Okay. Middle school, we are at two-ten, we have seventy-sixth graders, sixty-five seventh graders, and seventy-five eighth graders. We, like the other schools, are finishing up. and seventy-five eighth graders. We, like the other schools, are finishing up IXL benchmark testing with reading and math. This last Saturday, we had an exciting AMS back-to-school dance. Yeah, the kids always love that. And then, the teachers love it, too. They love going and just, you know, watching. They're just learning. They're learning what to do at a dance. That's pretty difficult for them in the beginning. So, Ms. Hader is joining us tonight. She's working on her principal's certificate. So, you know, she wanted to come join us, and she, yes. I asked her if she wanted to read her little blurb, and she's like, no. Just tell them what you're doing.
It is read an accurate ag book this week through the Ag in the Classroom organization. And so, since I teach reading, we are going to read a book about popcorn tomorrow and watch videos on the different types of corn, because popcorn doesn't just come from regular corn. And so, my students are gonna learn about that tomorrow, and then I'm purchasing some popcorn from Rialto so they can have a snack. Just something a little different to hopefully engage them in reading. Something different for them.
I had three teachers, I forgot to add this, three teachers just come back from uplifting classrooms. They loved it, thought it was great. It's always a great program, you know, especially for, you know, two of mine are first-year teachers, and they're like, wow, there's so much to learn. So, that was very good.
Where is that him?
Down in Norman at the K-20 Center. That was very good. And I asked some kids about, you know, I guess I was gonna go to them to see what to do for the playground equipment, and I ran into some girls, and they're like, well, you want like, like some benches, you know, we can sit at, you know, like tables. And so, I asked them about it, and they're like, mm, it really needs to be play. I was like, okay, so we're gonna try to shift gears and think of something else to put on the yard. The yard.
Lots of athletics going on in the class.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Beeler has a softball tonight, so I am going to make attempts at running through what he has. Softball was dealing with rain tonight, so they are out at the rec, which is a really great place to play. So, we have all kinds of athletics in the swing of things. Football, softball, Ladybugs, Goldbugs, everybody's doing great things out there, and we're pretty excited about it. Middle school softball, Ladybugs are twelve and oh, and so they are really rocking and rolling, doing great things. Their September schedule, Mr. Beeler has here listed Blackwell, Woodward, Enid, and a three-day run at a Chisholm tournament on September eighteenth through twentieth. So, they're gonna be doing unbelievable things, working towards that undefeated streak and keeping that alive. High school softball, also going strong and doing great things. They are entering September at thirteen and five, and they have seventeen players, two managers. The team has already placed third at the Heart of Oklahoma tournament and at the Highway Eighty-One tournament. They are doing fabulous. Now, you're gonna wanna remember September nineteenth. Mrs. Martini's gonna go take some medicine. She'll be right back. September nineteenth is pack the park, and so we wanna, that's a bye football game or bye Friday, so no football game that week, and we're gonna be out at the softball field. So, we want to make sure everyone comes out for that. September twenty-ninth is senior night, and so that is against Wacomis, and that's gonna be a great game. We want to make sure we honor all our seniors, which I look at them and think, how are you seniors already? They were freshmen when I got here. So, they are my first class to have from freshmen all through, so it's kind of exciting for me. Middle school cross-country also fabulous start, eleven girls, twelve boys. August twenty-third, they were to meet. Ladybugs placed third overall, led by Harper Eisenbart, who claimed first place individually. Other top finishers were Brooklyn Zimmerman at fourteen, Jordan Logston sixteenth, and Julie Odell at twentieth. The boys placed second overall, led by Ryan Hanson, with fifth place, he was joined by Colt Meyer thirteenth, Grayson Smith? Nope? Okay.
Grayson.
Yeah.
Grayson Smith, Little Typo fourteenth, and Coda Leon at sixteenth. Upcoming meets are Cherokee, Tonkawak, Hennessy, and they're just gonna keep running their little hearts out. High school cross-country, nine girls, seven boys. They're also doing really well. They had their own meet, August twenty-third, out of the rec. Ladybugs finished third overall with Kylie Ayder coming in seventh, Kyla Logston tenth, Caitlee Martin at thirteenth. Goldbugs finished fourth overall, which is still great. Hunter Stocker was fifteenth, Isaac Anton was twenty-sixth. He's doing great, too. So, they went to Watanga, seventh overall there for the Ladybugs, twelfth overall for the Goldbugs. And then, they will be at Cherokee on the sixth, Tonkawak the eleventh, and then the pre-state at North Karak Creek on the thirteenth. Middle school football, they are, let's see, he says they, their season is going strong. Thursday was against Fairview battling down to the wire before falling twenty-two to twenty. I feel like I should read this as a sports report. In the final minutes, thirty-one players on the roster. Program was adopted or has adopted the same offensive system as the high school team and hoping to really grow some players in their positions and creating some consistency and vertical alignment within that program. So, upcoming contest, Watanga today, Perry on the eighth, and Chisholm the twenty-ninth. So, high school football, we met Fairview this last Friday, which did not come like we had hoped, but we took a loss at a fifty-six to zero. We do have thirty-six players, six managers, and they are working hard to regroup and just move forward from that. This Friday is our home opener against Perry. It is faculty appreciation night. We always love that time where we can recognize one of our favorite teachers. The twenty-sixth will be homecoming, which it's hard to believe we're already talking about homecoming, and that will happen before we meet again. So, that week will be filled with some amazing things, from the distinguished Goldbug to the parade to just the bonfire. They're doing things a little differently with the bonfire this year. They're gonna have it in its usual place, but they're gonna meet in the park for a rally and a pep assembly there, and then travel up to the bonfire together to kind of finish that off. They kind of found that with the bonfire, it's so hot, it's really hard to try to have any kind of a pep rally and battle the heat. So, I think that's gonna be a lot of fun to do things a little differently. And then we have October tenth will be against, it will be youth football night and Hall of Honor. And then, I hate to say this out loud, but October thirty-first, which everyone affectionately refers to as Halloween, is senior night against Meeker. So, that's gonna be a really fun evening. So, lots of great things going on on all kinds of fronts with the athletics, and we're really excited about the seasons we have started, at both the middle school level and at the high school level. So, moving on to the high school report, we have a total of two hundred and eighty-five in our enrollment. Freshmen, seventy-three, sophomores, sixty-six, juniors, seventy-five, and seniors, seventy-one. We currently have four foreign exchange students, and so that has been really exciting. They're from Spain, France, Estonia, and Slovakia. So, it's gonna be a lot of fun with some foreign exchange students getting to learn some new things around our world. I want to say congratulations to Maddie Ryerson. She was crowned Miss Alva on August twenty-third, and so that was a great, a lot of fun. We had three competitors, Maddie, Christina Genlink, and Tatum Miller, and all three of those young ladies did a fabulous job. It was a, I'm glad I didn't have to be the one to judge it, because it would have been very hard to have chosen. All performed very well. All were beautiful. Tatum was named winner up, but it was just, it was a fabulous evening. So, Maddie will represent Alva High School at the Cinderella Pageant on October twenty-third and twenty-fourth. On the twenty-fifth, this last Monday, we had the honor of hosting the Oklahoma City National Memorial. They were, they brought The Journey of Hope, and it was a very powerful program, talking about the Oklahoma City bombing that took place on April nineteenth, nineteen ninety-five. It is hard to believe it's been thirty years since that took place, but they showed actual video from the bombing of the Murrow Building and timelines. I'm getting chills just thinking about it, but it was a wonderful program presented by two of the ladies from the museum, and then Susan Winchester also came and spoke. She was a previous representative, that Oklahoma representative lost her sister in that bombing. And she chronologicalized the timeline for their family of when her sister should have been home and when they didn't hear. And, you know, she was talking about how she was one of the last people bodies recovered from that bombing, and I can't fathom what that must have been like for that family as well as so many others. So, it was a wonderful program. Mark Bays was also here. He's with Oklahoma Forestry Department. He brought a sapling from the survival tree. And we will be looking in October at planting that sapling here on the campus of Alva High School. So, we talked about some of the places that could, that we could plant that tree, and one of the areas was the out front of the building. And I told Mr. Bays, now, we want to be really careful and think about where we're gonna plant that, because someday we would really like to extend that parking lot. And he said, well, here's the thing, the original survival tree was in a parking lot when the bombing took place. And so, the fact that this sapling would go into what may end up being a parking lot is kind of appropriate. He brought a stone to commemorate the tree, to tell the story of the tree. That granite that that is placed on, it is from the Murrow Building itself. And again, just get chills thinking about that that is a piece of the building that we are going to be placing here on our campus. So, pretty big, pretty big thing and very moving experience. FFA held an ice cream social. They haven't done that in quite a while. The weather was not cooperative. We didn't ever, kids never get in the water because of lightning, but it was still a great evening, and we had a lot of fun just getting to spend some time chatting and who doesn't like to eat ice cream, right? So, that is hopefully going to be an annual event again. Woods County Free Fairs this weekend, and they are setting up as we speak, and so that is always a fun time. Band of Gold, I want to point out that Band of Gold, bless their hearts, they traveled to Fairview. They did a fabulous job of supporting the football team with the pep songs and just as a pep band. They will be traveling to the away games that are nearest us, you know, those that are an hour, hour and a half away from us. So, we're really excited to be able to have them join us in the stands, and it's gonna be a lot of fun. They already sound great. They played one of their songs and marched to it at Fairview, and they are already on their way to a really great year. They have pulled out the old rendition of On AHS. It's a little different rendition than we've had the last few years. It is a half-step higher, and you play through once, and then there's a chant in the middle, and then you play through again, and it's gonna be a lot of fun. Just as an old bandy from years ago, it was pretty fun to hear that version, and I'm sure it kind of maybe took some of the spectators back to like, wait a minute, we're not yelling at the end, or we're not done yet. They're playing through again. And so, I want to make sure everyone knows that there's a little difference, but I don't show my age. I love the tradition of that old version of what is originally on Wisconsin, but on AHS. So, it's gonna be a lot of fun, and we're very excited. They did, God love them, they showed up a little almost late to the game, I mean, just like as the game's getting started, because they were fitting sixth graders for instruments, and there were forty-sixth graders who were there trying to get instruments that night before. They were trying to get out of town to get to the game. So, huge, wonderful problem to have, and we're really excited for the future of the Band of Gold. So, thank you.
Thank you. Awesome. Thank you. Four point two, super tendency report.
I just want to start off, talk about a couple of committees and matches. Split it right up into three committees, capital improvement, policy, and extrajudicial. Extrajudicial meeting, last month only had about three weeks between the four meetings. Last month, it was three and five weeks. Anyway. Didn't have a lot to talk about. Capital Improvement Committee, Matt, we discussed prioritizing a lot of improvement projects on some of our campuses. Everything from cleaning brick to replacing windows, all the things we talked about. Talked about prioritizing that. Discussed renovation projects at the entrance and the exterior at Washington. Matt was donating for that. Another day with Matt, I met with Midcontinental Restoration Company. They came. They're the ones that was originally talked to a couple of years ago. Walked the building with them, again, particularly focused on the outside as far as some of the repairs to the mortar with the brick, the joints on some of the window seals, that kind of thing. So, he's, I saw an email from him this afternoon, so that should be a quote. I'm getting that done. And then, Aaron Haiti with Architect, played the final touches on pricing for the construction, pricing, or remodel that entrance, so we can stay within that parameters of donating money. That, hopefully we start on that next, well, this fall anyway. We discussed options for some facility improvements at the Ag Farm, we donated money, and what we can do with those funds that would remain within the bounds of statute concerning construction projects on school property. So, we're moving on that, and then we talked a lot about the potential bond issue project and options for the new elementary school building, and renovations to at least Lincoln, Longfellow, Washington. Lincoln's got some structural problems. It's gonna start this whole thing. You ordered the options for reusing, repurposing those other two neighborhoods. That was Capital Improvement Committee. Policy Committee, Matt, discussed a lot, had a lot of conversation about. Amendments we can make to some of our student policies, such as dress code, discipline things, and then talked about what appropriate enforcement of those policies would look like. So, just some of those policies are living things in every system. It's like you're constantly adjusting and that kind of thing. So, a lot of discussion there. For Facility View, we've completed the Wi-Fi grid project that was started in twenty twenty-three. So, every building's got all new Wi-Fi access points and all that kind of thing. So, at least from a network side, they have a lot better speeds in that instability that way. It's getting all the logins and those kinds of things to work on those networks. That can be a trick sometimes. Talked about Midcontinental being here. Remaining fund installation project, they're actually installing probably as we speak. There's funds, funding through year eight, it's category-two funds, that puts hardware into buildings. It's the funds that year eight's designated for the infrastructure of connectivity. So, using those funds to pull network cables and drops into all the classrooms that didn't have it, so the rest of the funds can get installed. Year eight pays for eighty percent of that project, the ownership of the two. And that was, it was put out, the vote did process through, Calhoun and Summer managed that. Carried two or three bids on it. Anyway, they're installing that right now. Transportation. Remember, we agreed to let the Baptist Church take our activity bus to Falls Creek. Those roads are windy and narrow, and it rode up against a hole on a bridge, I think so it was. Anyway, activity buses in Tulsa have that door repaired. I'm working with. I'm working with Baptist Church, I'm getting it paid for. I'm glad. When it returns, Mr. Ellis is taking the Citra. One of our other big activity buses, two national buses for repairs to a debt system. It won't, it doesn't reach it. You can, you can go ahead and manually do it, but it won't do it on its own. So there's a computer, something. See if they can get that worked out. Shouldn't be too big deal. Then the van will, will go over behind that to repair the air conditioning system on it. Just not, has a valve stuck or something that's not cooling like a shirt. Richard, RNTD, is looking for a new head for one of the mini buses or the people movers. I'm trying to see if I can find a head for it or a dumb surplus and replace the bus. One or the other, we need to replace the bus.
You help.
Tried to spur that along a bit. Basketball Charles, again, to take the Acadia to mechanic. It's been two, three years ago. That one down, it does turn over a bit. Like I've heard it run. I'm not sure if it's just, I'm not sure if it's got a crack in the head or a head gasket or something. It's almost like it's water walking and too much fluid on top of the piston won't let, let the motor turn over, so. So you get to mechanic, figure out what's wrong with it, if any surplus, it's still as is, we're to put it back on the road. Wonder if we can get it. As far as all the route buses, a little similar to general, just normal makes tires or that kind of thing. Anyway, that's, that's my.
Thank you. Mary Nan will be to 4.3 resignation, retirements, reassignments.
I just have one resignation. Mary Cox, a paraprofessional. She took another job here in Alba.
Number five is items of current business. 5.1, discussion with possible board action vote to improve and offer employment to applicants number one through three, non-certified positions for 2025, '26 school year.
Well, we have three paraprofessionals, Madison Pope, Kyle Uhos, and Caitlin Thor. I would recommend to hire those three individuals.
Do you entertain a motion?
Move to approve out of 5.1 as presented. Second.
McDermond?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
5.2, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the estimate of needs for fiscal year '26.
We need to table this. We, we're about receiving that.
Okay.
We, we do need to schedule a special meeting in a couple of weeks. We have to have it to the county by October 1st. So it is, so is there a day next week, second half next week, at a time that works best?
So you think next week is the week?
No, next week or?
Yeah.
When's the access board meeting?
I'm not sure. The better, the quicker we can get it in, the better. If we can get it to the court house by October 1st is good, but.
Yeah, it seems to work. We have a meeting at nine, we'll probably get it to Melon Hall.
I'm out of town, eight, nine, and 10, but you can have it without me if you need to.
Eleven, both of us fine. Or that's right. Any of those, any day works.
Things, things better for you, Paul?
Well, I mean, the eighth, ninth would work. The 12th would be better for me than the 11th, so.
Very close to the 11th. It's at work.
Now, how, what time does we hear?
I mean, it's, I can, I can, I can shoot. If we wanted to do a five o'clock, I can make that happen.
Give you time to get over there?
Yeah, soon. If you want, one item should take longer.
So Friday the 12th at 5:00 PM? Is that what I'm hearing?
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
But we do need to table that.
That will be tabled then. 5.3, discussion with possible board action vote to approve an agreement between Wood West State University and the Alba District for purposes of sharing athletic trainer for the '25, '26 school year.
Dr. Hanford, per screen, Hannah, which problems about? They hired a trainer, if we'd be interested in sharing some of that cost to, to have a certified trainer work for us. Injury prevention, some of that kind of stuff. We've been talking about that for six months probably, off and on. They called and said, hey, you got somebody? I said, well, let's do it. Anyway, they, university's, $20,000, it's like an old portion salary, but it's not even quite near half. Trainer will be here on campus a couple of days a week. Our kids have free reign to go to the university, meet with him as well, Saturday clinic, that kind of thing. Get home from a football game, I mentioned, but wake up in the morning, can't walk in your knee or something, be a good place to go for, get checked out for, up throughout the city, or something like that. And then help some advise for rehab, that kind of thing. Just good to have a certified trainer and all that stuff. Be at, be at home games, that kind of thing. Talking about concussion protocols and all that. Anyway, I'd recommend to contract with the university for athletic training.
Do you entertain a motion?
I move to approve out of 5.3. Second.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermond?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Yes.
5.4, discussion with possible board action vote to approve cooperative agreement with Freedom Public Schools for basketball, baseball for the '25, '26 school year.
I don't remember if it was the day after our board meeting for August or the day after, that Ms. Burgess from Superintendent Freedom called and said they had, wouldn't know if we'd be interested in letting their kids play ball with us. Said she had two or three boys and two or three girls. They, they're totally rolling the dice a little late. So they, they obviously don't have enough kids to field the team. We still have a couple of kids that they don't play. They used to co-op in Morland. Not sure why that fell through. Co-op with Arlington last year, I think it's other things, Burton's struggling right now. That fell through. They're just looking for a place for the kids. She called us, neighbor school, wouldn't know if we'd be interested in helping them out. So as an educator, I just, I don't like the idea of kids not being able to participate. We talked about it quite a bit. I've talked to our coaches, here with people, and nobody's got any major objectives to it. I just want to make sure we move up the classification and all that. I did all the things that way. You don't, I mean, you just never can tell if that was the same case sometimes. There's always, always reserve 1% for that. When they move the private schools out, whatever. When I look at our classification, if you take last year's, last year's schools and put this year's ADMs on them, we're just right in the middle. So 32 schools in our class were like 14th. So we would have to move like 13 spots to move out of that class. I, I know. It'd be unheard of, it'd be the first time in history you move 13 spots without a massive enrollment change, one or the other. So where we're at, where we're going to be that way. Football and soccer, they asked about football, soccer. We're in the middle of classification periods with those, so even if we applied it, we couldn't co-op this year. So I told them, I bring it to y'all, it, so let's do basketball, baseball. If it goes well, everybody gets along, and we have football, soccer next year, you know. But I think being a neighbor school, I feel like it's the right thing to do to help them out.
Will they transport them here?
They'll be responsible for all the transport and everything.
For all the practices?
That's, that's the, that's the handshake agreement I have with them. Like I said, if it works, great. If it doesn't?
Sure.
If it doesn't, but. Yeah, they'll be responsible for all that kind of stuff.
Those are questions I had. Anybody else have any questions? I entertain a motion then?
I still move.
I side it.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
McDermond?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. 5.5, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the following adjusted child nutrition meal prices for '25, '26 school year.
Last month we approved meal prices. We need, we had to get them approved, so we get them published and their handbooks follow things.
Right.
USDA had not, had not published their Schedule B pricing for some of that. And they set the minimum that we go ahead and charge. So if either our prices are below that minimum, we have to raise to at least the minimum or, or pay it out of our general fund. When you look at, look what some of these are, like the adult breakfast, if we paid, if we paid that, I think it's 44 cents that we were off. If we paid that 44 cents out of general fund, that becomes a fringe benefit to those employees that's to be taxed, all of them. It's just over 44 cents. So adjusted prices is our adult breakfast price and then the contract pricing for breakfast on child and adult. Breakfast is the only one we really missed when we estimated that. So, and I think I would raise 25, 50 cents from what we said that to begin.
Okay, I couldn't, without looking, I couldn't remember.
Didn't go up to $1. So it says adult breakfast is $3, child's contract breakfast is $3.50, and adult's contract breakfast is $4. And we don't have a lot of contract, so Big Five, whoever's going to want it. Anyway.
Questions? Okay, questions for nutritional meal prices? Do you entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermond?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Yes.
Discussion, pardon me, 5.6, discussion with possible board action vote to approve a contract with Big Five Head Start for '25, '26 school year.
This is the same contract we have with Big Five last year, provides breakfast and lunch to the Head Start on Main Street. It's prepared here at the high school. We package it in bulk. They, they do all the divvying up and serve. That's why we have to have contract pricing on our pricing in US, so contract. They're responsible to come pick it up and all the things. It's prepared, no, no danger to take. I'd recommend that approve that contract.
Do you entertain a motion?
Move to approve out of 5.6.
Barton?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermond?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
5.7, discussion with possible board action vote to approve Dana Manning as an adjunct instructor for psychology and sociology for the '25, '26 school year.
Ms. Manning has taught this before. She's taught this, she's made adjunct her psychology, sociology. Classes added to the players.
Motion?
Motion. Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermond?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
5.8, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the gifted and talented committee of fiscal year '26, parents of gifted and talented students Courtney Esarella and Michelle Newton, teacher of elementary students April Richway, teacher of middle school students Delaney Lincoln Schiff, teacher of high school students Cara Broad, counselor Stephanie Nichols and Tina Pettis, administrator Stephanie Martini.
Gifted and talented committee is a committee that we're obligated to have. The state approved this committee, made members, so we love that process.
I still move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermond?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
5.9, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the internal activities committee for fiscal year '26, administrator Vicki Nicewander, Dalton Beeler, Jeremy Jones, Tina Pettis, Adam Lloyd, and parent Ashley Ferguson.
Our students are only allowed to have 10 activity absences before we have to approve one. As you can imagine, we have some of our kiddos that are active ones that will definitely have more than 10 if they're doing all the things. So this is the committee to review their information and then approve additional days as needed. So you can approve this.
So moved. Second.
Barton?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
McDermond?
Yes.
Yes.
5.10, discussion with possible board action, appoint the superintendent to review results of national criminal history record searches for fiscal year '26.
This is so I can review background checks for new employees. Appreciate the urge to do that.
I'll leave for you. Did we do that? Do you entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermond?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
5.11, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the following out of state travel requests. 5.11.1, Middle School Football to Pratt. 5.11.2, Alba FFA to Indianapolis, Indiana. And 5.11.3, Alba FFA to Lyons, Kansas.
This school has a football game in Pratt. Pratt came here last year, so we need to approve out of state trip to do that. The FFA is, that's what makes me realize, yeah, National FFA Convention, Indianapolis, Indiana. Chapter earned the National Three Star Chapter, used to be National Golden Devil Chapter. They're old enough to remember Golden Devil Chapters. Pretty big deal. So really proud of the FFA chapter for that. That's to go to Indianapolis National FFA Convention and earn that award, be onstage all the things. And then Lyons, Kansas is a life song judging contest. Recommend to approve those three out of state travel requests.
So moved.
Second.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
McDermond?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Any new business? I'm six. Seven will be signing of documents approved by earlier action. Number eight is McDermond. Do you entertain a adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane? Barton?
Yes.
McDermond?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.